Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Ms. Byram, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Quinturne.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hopkins is getting here. He was caught in traffic. All right, I'll let him get up and then we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, okay?
Sounds good to me. I'm already up.
That's right, all right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, at this time, I will ask Dr. Sneed, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, there are no adjustments to the agenda at this time.
Okay, hearing that there are no adjustments, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I have a second for discussion, please.
Okay, have a second.
A second.
Okay.
Um, I would like to add, um, discussion to the agenda tonight about the independent audit.
Okay, uh, we can do that. Um, which item, let's see, we can go down and we can make it, um, H, maybe?
Or maybe you go under board member.
Or we can stick it under, let's do B, under Board Member Items, okay?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hearing that, can we have everybody in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, Dr. Sneed?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, tonight, under Superintendent's Reports and Recommendations, I have some items that are routine and cyclical, while others are some updates. And to start us off is a presentation of a Foreign Exchange Student Program. Again, this will be informational tonight as intended with expected action on July 18th, the next board meeting. To give you this information, I present to you Assistant Superintendent for Operations, Mr. Bill Berry.
Madam Chair, Dr. Sneed, members of the board, I come to you this evening with a consideration of a, for a Foreign Exchange Student Program. We have A S S E International Student Exchange Program, who has requested permission to be added to our approved list of Orange County Public Schools Foreign Exchange Student Programs. They would be, upon approval, added to the list that you see there already. And, Mr. Hopkins, as I've done in the past, and as you usually request, I have tried to do some research on the organization because I know if I don't, you will, and even if I do, you will. So, based on that, I have found there, there were several blemishes, I guess you would say, on their record from some things that I saw on, uh, the internet. Most of these were associated with, uh, concerns associated with exchange of students during COVID times. I think other than that, there weren't, uh, any concerns prior to, and none of recent times either, in the last year. So, I am presenting that information, and then for, uh, your consideration for approval at your next meeting, unless you decide to do otherwise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is everyone comfortable with approving this tonight?
I am. If you'd entertain a motion, I'll make that, that we accept it as presented.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brings me to Item B of my report and recommendations. Item B is a presentation of supplemental appropriations. Bringing those to you, uh, are, is our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Gary Honaker. He will explain the ESER 2 and ESER 3 supplemental appropriation.
Yes, good evening. Um, I'm here to request a supplemental appropriation for a, the ESER Fund. This is for special education post-secondary support, uh, in the amount of 124, 886, 10. Uh, did attach the documents with that. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, since there are no questions, is everyone, um, comfortable with approving this? If so, I entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, uh, requested approval of additional funds through the ESER Fund as presented by Mr. Honaker.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Pose. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brings me to Item C, which is the, an update on the FY 2022-23 budget. And as I've kept you informed all, uh, budget season long, is that this has been a moving target in terms of, of, of our budgetary process, but I would like to commend, um, our, our local, uh, government, our local Board of Supervisors, County Administrator, and our local school board for being forward-thinking and supportive of, of the total picture. As you know, the, the Board of Supervisors has, has passed their budget, which has our, our budget recommendation in there, and so we're very grateful. So you might say, well, why are we here today? Well, we're here today because, um, we were provided a CALP tool based upon Governor Youngkin's anticipated approval at the time of the state budget. Well, as we know, Governor Youngkin did approve the state budget, and so what does that mean for us localities? Well, after reviewing the CALP tool, what it means for us is the following, so we'd like to update you on that, and I think you'll see asterisks beside Item C. Item C is, uh, an actionable item. So, uh, knowing that you've, uh, reviewed the budget all, um, season long, I'd like to present to you, uh, what the passage of the state budget does. And what the state budget does to our local budget is, is good news. And we would just like, uh, board support on this, this evening. So, essentially, our operating fund gets an additional $728,689 in state revenue. And so, uh, staff, uh, met and discussed, well, what would be the most appropriate use, because we didn't want to, of the money, because we didn't want to come to the board with, uh, saying to you, hey, we got this money, and, you know, just ask for current board's approval. We wanted to, uh, put it to good use. One was a fuel increase. I don't think I'll get an argument from anybody in this room about the wisdom of placing more money in our fuel line. Transportation, maintenance, and repairs. Uh, the transportation part, department does an excellent job in tracking, uh, their, their, uh, repairs and, and, uh, maintenance throughout the year. And understanding, uh, on past data where they've been, uh, we believe it prudent to add $50,000 to that area. Maintenance, repairs, painting, and projects. There is not a time that we'd, uh, sit down with Mr. Arnold that he, and, and, and this is, this is lighthearted, Mr. Arnold, but Mr. Arnold, Arnold does an excellent job at keeping our buildings looking pristine and, and, uh, brand new. But he, he, that comes at a cost, and it's usually, uh, at a cost of painting and other such projects and repairs. And so we added 106, 362 to his FY 23 budget. Security cameras. Um, we are looking at, um, improving our security camera presence at the high school. Finding some of those blind spots, et cetera, et cetera, but while doing so, the technology changes so quickly that we wanted to take advantage of, uh, the technology. While we do have digital cameras, we are, you know, looking at cameras that are also, uh, digital, HD, they, they pan. Uh, we add more cameras, and the beauty of this, they're web accessible. And so we're updating, um, updating our capacity there. And something that we'd like to get back to, that we will think will help with our teacher retention, is, uh, adding a tuition assistance line to our budget. And what tuition assistance means is that if I'm an employee and I want to, uh, grow my craft and I want to better myself in terms of, uh, being more, um, you know, to, to grow in, in my school division that I care about and love dearly, then if I'm going to do that, I'd like some, some assistance. And so what that usually looks like, possibly looks like, is, is, is a teacher, uh, you know, needing tuition assistance to attain a, a, an ed leadership degree. Or maybe it's an instructional assistant who really wants to be a teacher, but he or she can't, uh, afford that, that opportunity right now. And so that's, that's what we mean by tuition assistance. And so we believe, as a staff, that this best places the money where we will need it most. As far as a capital fund goes, um, this is, this is an unprecedented, uh, uh, money to, to place in the capital fund. I think if you've been reading, you understand that, um, and plus, if you followed, uh, the Coalition of Small and Rural Schools that, that I have been involved in, you will know that we have lobbied, or I don't know if lobbied is the correct word, but we've really, um, asked for support from the state, and they've come through. So there's a capital fund of two, approximately $2.1 million in state revenue for such projects that Orange County can always use. So I wanted to spend a lot of time on this one slide because this is the meat of why we're here this evening, presenting this again. But if you want to look at the other slides, essentially, we're, uh, Mr. Honaker went through and updated all of the numbers. You've seen these slides before. These are proposed revenue estimates, um, based on our ADM of 4761.4. We haven't really changed anything since our last slide presentation. This is, I think, the third time, uh, you've seen this, or, uh, or maybe the second. But anyway, all we did was adjust this to where, uh, it recognizes the 728, 689. So the next slide, um, again, federal revenues, uh, again, aren't, aren't really affected here. This is the same essential, this is essentially the same slide that we've shown you in the past. This is just the federal revenue piece. Remember, ours, ours came from the state. Next. And of course, the local revenues are the same as the last presented. Next. Operating budget, the total revenues, um, you'll see the variance. FY 23, we're looking, uh, again, I, I feel kind of silly repeating all this again, but I just want, want you to know that I, I still find it remarkable, uh, the amount from the state. The variance is, is about $4.3 million, and, and that's really, uh, remarkable. And I think that's, really puts us, uh, in a good position in, in Orange County. And then, of course, the county funds remain at, at 881, 549. Next. And then there's our, you know, if you have a revenue side, you have an expenditure side. Again, the difference, uh, is between a 55 million and a six, uh, 55.7 million and 62.7 million dollars. Uh, the difference between the years. Next. And then again, we just included the same funds we did in our last presentations to, to make this whole. Next. Textbooks, Head Start, again, keep, yeah, the, again, the, the debt service and the capital, that we have presented before. Next. All funds, um, Mr. Honaker and I put all the revenues and expenditures, uh, out in front of you so you can see where they match. That's all that is. And that's it. Then, like I say, the meat was in the second slide, uh, because you've seen all the other slides before. So essentially, just with your blessing, we'd like to proceed, um, with these additional funds in the manner that we presented. That's the recommendation. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No, just a comment that, uh, indeed, it's good to have a budget finally, from Richmond. And it's not in this, but, uh, the county supervisors should be commended for stepping up to give us those added resources in our school buildings with security, with the SROs, so you just need to note it. That's all.
Yep. I agree. I think this is, um, a well-put-together budget. Thank you, Mr. Honaker. And I would like to say that it's been a, and it is continually a good relationship with the Board of Supervisors because they basically gave us what we asked for. And, um, then was so gracious to, to meet, to, um, put the money into hiring the eight resource officers that we will need. So, um, I think that they have been more than generous, and, um, I would like to show my appreciation to them as well. So. If there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to accept the budget as presented.
I'm glad to make a motion to, uh, approve the budget, physical year 23 budget, uh, as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We appreciate that very much. Again, um, speaking of adding to the fuel line, we, we do have a renewal of contract for diesel fuel gasoline and number two, heating oil with Quarles Energy Services. And this is one of those, uh, deals where we've had a, uh, a contract, but we have to, we come back each year and we can keep extending. And, and Mr. Sarver is here to answer any, any questions, and also to present, uh, the specifics as necessary. Mr. Sarver.
Thank you, Dr. Sneed, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm requesting, uh, renewal number three of four possible renewals for this contract, uh, with Quarles Energy Services. Quarles has been wonderful to work with. They have ensured that we've had the fuel that we needed, especially during some times when that has been an issue, uh, for the general public. The pricing, um, is based off of the, um, OPUS rack rate plus a cost differential. And for our bulk diesel, the differential is seven cents per gallon. Then the, uh, for gasoline and, um, heating oil, it's .125. And that has largely to do with the size of truck that's used to deliver. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Sarver?
I don't have one with this, but as long as you're up here. How is that system with the buses so that the parents can see where the buses, did we get that working, or?
We did get that piloted to Gordon Barber. We will be launching it to the rest of the division within the next couple of weeks as a mechanism to distribute the bus routes. They have to sign in and create an account, and we'll be doing some marketing with that. We'll also be using some traditional method, methods to get their bus route information out, but that's going to be a, a very helpful tool to develop the two-way communication that'll make the first day of school run a lot more smoothly.
Well, thank you.
All right, um, is everyone comfortable with going ahead and passing this this evening? If so, I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make that motion that we renew the contract for that third extension as presented.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The next item I'm really excited to present because, uh, Mr. Arnold and I have been a little nervous for, how many, couple of years now with regards to these, this lighting?
Since you've been here.
Okay, okay, four years, okay. So this proprietary lighting that was put in Locust Grove Middle School, when Locust Grove Middle School was, um, uh, first constructed, essentially, when new technology is placed, uh, into, into an area, it looks really good, and you always hope the company stays in business, but Mr. Arnold is here to tell you more about this. And by the way, the pricing came in a little better, didn't it?
Yes, it did.
Good, so I'll let you, I'll let you, I'll,
Rarely stays.
I'll let you, so, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Sneed. Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, we put an RFP, Request for Bids, for the classroom lighting improvements, and the project will include the replacement of the T5 fluorescent lighting in all classrooms. And as Dr. Sneed stated, it's because the, uh, entire system is proprietary. We can't go in, replace defective parts. It won't be, uh, currently available products will not work with that system. So we were forced to, uh, change out the whole thing, basically, in all the classrooms. It includes failing and obsolete daylight sensors, occupancy sensors, switching and controls in those classrooms, and they will be replaced with state-of-the-art equipment. We received two bids by email on the bid date of May, May 20th, Friday, and the low bid of, bid of $248,710.47 was received from Net Zero USA, and it is well within the budget of $300,000. Uh, the company is based in greater Atlanta, Georgia, but it has regional offices throughout the country, including one in Roanoke. Net Zero has also provided a long list of references from several school divisions, uh, throughout the southeast, and they have provided letters of reference from four of them. We feel like they're very capable of doing the job as well as providing a very good price. Therefore, the, the red administration recommends approval of a contract with Net Zero USA.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
I'd just make a statement. Uh, I was involved with this school when we built this middle school, and one of the things we were trying to do was make it as energy efficient as possible. And there was a lot of new technology went in that building, but, um, it wasn't more than a year after it was, the lighting system was installed, that we knew we had problems with it. It was just hard to control, and it, it didn't function. It may have saved energy, but it didn't function to the use of the teachers and, uh, people that used the building. So I'm, I'm very happy that this is going to be replaced.
Has any of the other schools been upgraded to the, um, LED lights?
Typically, the other schools will have, uh, still have the high-efficiency fluorescent lighting in classrooms and interior spaces.
Okay.
About 90% of the exterior lighting is LED, with just maybe a few that are still fluorescent. Uh, most of the interior classrooms were done, uh, as part of a performance contract in 2013. At that time, LED lighting was not affordable, so we went with what would save enough energy to pay for the project and still be affordable. Our next performance contract will include LED.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, is everyone comfortable with approving this, or had you rather keep it on the July 18th meeting?
I would move to accept the bid of $248,710.47 from Net Zero to, uh, upgrade the lighting.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brings us to our next section, the School Facilities Projects Update. And this is a, uh, exciting time when Mr. Arnold presents to us all the, the things that, that he's doing to improve and enhance our schools. And before he gets started, I, I would just like to say, um, and Mr. Hopkins and I together attended the, uh, Economic Development Partners Group meeting a week ago today. And, um, and, and as he has told you before, we each give a report. I, I, uh, touched on, uh, the security vestibule enclosures. The group was very interested in those for, for the security reasons, and I was able to, uh, promote the, the work that, that you've done there and the planning that you and Mr. Berry have done together to secure our schools, to make them more safe as, as, uh, for, for the students as visitors approach. And so I just wanted to take time to, uh, to let everybody know, that's in his report. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Arnold. Give you the floor.
All right, we'll start out with the big one, Gordon Barber. Project has started. We had the groundbreaking, uh, on May 25th. Was intended by, uh, school board members, uh, members of the Gordonville community, and Ted Voorhees of the county. And that launched the project. Uh, since then, the, uh, site fencing, the silt fence, and the construction entrance have been installed. And the contractor has been very rapidly turning in submittals, which are the documentation of all the different products and processes that go into the project, getting them all turned in upfront, because we know we'll encounter supply chain issues, and we want to nip that by having this stuff ordered way ahead of time. Also, the, uh, another contractor came and moved the shed out of the way so that the, uh, site clearing could progress. And, uh, Columbia Gas finally came and moved the gas line, which was going to be in their way. Would have gone right under the foundation of the project. It's now out of the way. And, uh, we have removed several large trees that were either dying or in the way of the project. So we're ready to start digging. Moving on to Orange County High School, we had a contractor come in and rebuild. They have now rebuilt both bathrooms in the Voag building. These are the bathrooms where the original walls were framed with untreated wood right up against unsealed cinder block. And they deteriorated. Uh, they were basically turned to mulch by the time the tiles fell off the wall and we needed, knew we needed to do something. So we rebuilt both of those bathrooms. At the Hornet Sports Center, they are proceeding with the installation of cooling coils so that we will finally have AC in the locker rooms of our fieldhouse. And I'm noting this is a milestone worthy of celebration because it is the last student-occupied indoor space in the entire division that was on air conditioning. So the time has come. On to Locust Grove Elementary, we, uh, resurfaced the blacktop playground behind the school, and we just, uh, this week completed painting all of the exterior doors. Orange Elementary School, the, uh, I'm calling it substantially complete. They finished the rest of the job over spring break, but there is still one panel that is missing from the storefront. It is, uh, a custom-made aluminum frame, which was supposed to have been shipped on June 16th. It's now not being shipped until the 29th. If that doesn't, they doesn't slide, we're in good shape to have it installed well before school starts. Lightfoot and Unionville security enclosures are complete. Uh, we've had to relocate the desks to where the enclosures are. In the case of Orange Elementary and Lightfoot, Unionville, it was built right where the desk was. We didn't have to move it, just install some different, uh, wiring and such. Also at Unionville, we replaced the water such. Also, at Unionville, we replaced the water heater. It was the same model that was installed at Lightfoot originally that we replaced last spring. This one was in a little better shape, but contractor was able to acquire two of the same high-efficiency hybrid gas water heaters and give us the same price for the second one. Last but not least, here at Teak, oh, I missed one. We also just completed painting the walls in the kindergarten building. The metal walls are kind of in ugly green and the cinder block walls were off-white. So, it didn't really make any sense. But we painted them all a nice light gray, similar to what we have at Orange Elementary. And also at Teak, we have completed the new flooring in room 51 at the back of the administrative wing. That was formerly asbestos adhesive tile in half of the room and old carpet in the other half. Now, it's all one space. It matches and it looks huge.
What's, what's it mean by VCT flooring?
Vinyl composition tile.
Okay, thank you.
It's what we have in most of the hallways and classrooms of the other schools.
Uh huh.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
That brings me to my final item. Ms. Byram and I'll tag team or anyone else from the department if there are questions. But we have a first review of some policy revisions. This first review, basically, these are softballs with, with policy, mostly editorial changes or legal reference changes. But if not, the ones highlighted in yellow, we, we make note of, of, of the nuanced changes. So, I think you'll see that there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, about 11, that we felt the need to, you know, highlight for you. And again, this is the first, first read. And there, as you know, there can be a second read before approval. But we think that the first read, hopefully, if you have any questions, we can answer those in time for action on July 18th. Ms. Byram, do you have anything to add or?
Not really. Many of the changes that are recommended by these are a reflection of an amendment of code. And a lot of them, we've already been doing or, or are prepared to make a change. So, that we are doing them.
Okay.
I have a couple.
Okay.
On the BDA, on referring to the BDDG, you had taken out recording and replaced it with taken. But in the bottom of BDA, you left in recorded. So, I was just wondering if maybe those should complement each other.
Yes. I can update that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do you have another one, Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Hold on. Sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
I should only printed the ones I made changes to. The JHCB, you have the student and then you have the student's parent. I would like if we could add beside the student if 18 years or older. And then also beside the student's parents slash legal guardian. Anywhere that it complements. I think it's like, one, two, three, four places on that particular one. And then also on the JHCE, add legal guardian.
Okay. Could you repeat that so I make sure I get that down?
Yep.
Exactly.
So, the JHCB, anywhere that it has the student, if we could put in parentheses, if 18 years or older.
Okay.
And then besides student, parents, put slash legal guardian or whatever other form instead of slash. I'm not sure, but.
Okay.
And then the other one was the JHCE. It says student's parent slash or legal guardian.
Okay.
Okay.
So, both of those policies. Okay.
I think that was all of mine.
All right. So, you, so I'm gonna.
Yeah, go ahead. So, you're, you're finished, right, Ms. Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just didn't want to.
All right.
Move on.
Yes. And channeling my inner Walter Cronkite. And that's the way it is on this Monday, June 27th, 2022. Have a good night.
All right. So, the next one is under board member items. And let's see, Mr. Hopkins is the author of this. So, Mr. Hopkins, I'll let you take lead on this.
Yes, ma'am. Let me get it back up here. In the computer world, if you close the wrong thing, you have to start all over again. Well, I added, I added a sentence or I, I've suggested we add a sentence. And I think the reason for it, the sentence for those people that maybe can't read it up there is, "When a group of citizens desire to speak on the same topic, the chair may exercise discretion to limit a public hearing to 30 minutes on a first sign-up, first speak basis." Now, actually, the school board has the authority to do that. We can limit the amount of time you speak and we can limit the total time. But I thought, I thought if we're going to be limiting the, now, this doesn't say that it would be limited all the time. It would just be limited at the discretion of the chair. We have limited the, the total time at least twice this year already. And that is usually done at the time the public comment was put on the agenda. But you don't always know before the meeting, how many speakers are going to be talking. So, if we come up, I, I just want to get some control of the meeting so that we're not having five-hour meetings on a regular basis. And the, the only legal way to do that, well, there are other things, but they're more drastic than limiting the time. We could just stop the, by law, I'm not suggesting we do it. So, don't anybody write that down. But by law, we're not required to have these public comments. But I don't think that's the way to go. I think the people, everybody deserves a chance to speak. But I don't think the length of time should be totally unlimited. So, this just gives some guidance to the chair because she really controls how public comments go. She controls, she has the authority to control the audience. She has the authority to do all the other things that are said in there. And I just, if we are going to limit the total time, I just thought we should put something in a policy that at least indicates that we may do so. Whether she does so or not, I think would be, you're not going to get into public comment and then after a half hour say, no, we're going to stop. I think it's, would be more or less when we start public comment before anybody speaks. I can't speak for her, but I would be interested in how many people were signed up. And if I saw 60 people signed up, I think I would say, we're going to limit the comments tonight to 30 minutes. But that's up to her. I just think if you're going to do some limited on time, you need to put something that considered reasonable in our, our regulation here. But that, that's just my suggestion. It's whatever the board wants to do. I guess I've spoken to it. So, I guess I, I've really done it out of order. I should make a motion to, to put it on the agenda. So, I make a motion, we append the two regulations as listed as to what I just suggested. Do I, do I have a second?
I have a second for discussion.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm sorry I went ahead with my discussion ahead of time. But I, I think there has to be some kind of reasonable thing. And this one, I could live with. I know that the people that want to talk are going to complain. And I would too if I were them. But there's also, the public expects us to get our business done. And I don't want to turn, I don't want this school board meetings turning into Loudoun County or Spotsylvania County. They have, that's not the way I want this board to operate.
I would agree. I believe that we do need to have better control over our public comments. You know, just making sure that it's fair across the board. And also not to create a sense of, you know, a filibuster holding us here till whenever. I believe our last public comment section, the longest one, shall I say, was under three hours. And so, I would like to move to amend this statement. And basically have it say the same thing. But the chair may exercise discretion to limit the public hearing to three hours on a first sign-up, first speak basis. All signups must be submitted one hour prior to the meeting start time. So, that way, there's no confusion as to who signed up or who did not. And it also allows a, a good amount of people to express their feelings in a public manner in addition to the emails that we also receive from the community.
I really don't have any comment.
The, well, if I may, this language that's put in the proposal talks about groups and it's kind of hard to just determine if there's going to be a, a group on any topic for this or that. And it's not as coordinated, I guess. Sometimes it can be. Another component to, to think about is email is the, the FOIA is, it's definitely available for any comment that somebody would like to make. The written word, sometimes people aren't induced to want, are compelled to want to come speak. They just don't, are not good public speakers. But limiting somebody's ability to come up to the podium to just a small amount of time. I knew when I signed up, what I signed up for. And so, if I have to sit here and listen, I'm willing to sit and listen. So, I would expand the amount of available time for public hearing, for public comment. And that's kind of the foundation of where we're at. Just my thoughts.
Well, it seems like, it seems like what I hear is, we're just talking about the amount of time. I put, I put what I thought was fair, but I'm willing to go with whatever the board wants to go with. I mean, I.
There is a balance.
I, I, I'll be straight out honest to you. If I have to set three hours every meeting for public comment, I think I'm going to start missing some meetings.
Well, I, I have to agree with Mike. You know, I thought, I thought about this, you know. And in some ways, it sounds good. But then, when you think about it, and actually this weekend, I had several people say something to me and say to me, you're an elected official and there shouldn't be any time restraints on the public who elected you as to when they want to speak. Whether it's 10 people or 50 people. And while I had to think about that, I have a tendency to agree. You know, when we signed up for this, you know, that's what you're getting. So, so I think as long as we have public comment, if you sign up. Now, whether you take it from three minutes to two minutes, you know, I think you can say what you need to say most time in two minutes. Whether you knock the time back a minute, but I think everyone should be at least given a chance to speak. Especially after hearing as many comments as I did this weekend.
So, I would like to add something. So, it does, it does say it's under your discretion. So, that would be one thing that wouldn't necessarily affect every public meeting or public comment. The one thing that I would like to add is that if we, before we go into public comment, if we know how many people are actually speaking, and then we can make the decision whether we take a recess at that time, or if we go ahead and proceed with public comment.
I, I agree with that.
What, I mean, what would the recess be for?
To take a break. Just to take a break.
Rest of the room.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, actually, that's, that's when I thought my motion to do this was, the only fair time to do it would be before the public comment starts. In other words, you know, if we have 60 people, if, if the board wants to listen to 60 people, I guess they can do it. But I'm certainly not interested.
So, I, I would also like to emphasize that this is at the discretion. So, it wouldn't be at every meeting. And it would ultimately be up to the chair. I also, initially, I'll tell you, my thoughts were to extend this to five hours. Because at that point, a five-hour public comment, nobody's listening to that anyways. And I don't know really who, who, how many people would sign up to fill up that many speaking points. I don't think limiting the time from three minutes to two minutes is fair. Because if you have a lot to say, three minutes is not a long time. And so, I think three minutes is, when I had a lot to say, I came and spoke at a school board meeting. I didn't get to say everything I wanted to. So, I do think that the three-minute rule is in place for a good reason. As school board members, we have the opportunity to change policy and that's what this would be doing. So, I would like to put my motion back on the table, but reword it, which would be an amendment to Mr. Hopkins' original motion, which is, when public comment is offered, so we're taking out the groups of people, but when public comment is offered, the chair may exercise discretion to limit the public hearing time on a first sign-up, first speak basis to, I'll say, three hours. We can discuss that with another motion if, if desired by the board. First sign-up, first speak basis for three hours. All signups must be submitted one hour prior to the meeting start time.
Laura, just a question for Laura. The signups are now, and when I read the policy, it sounds like you can come to the meeting and sign up.
Yes. We haven't updated this since the COVID situation. But we, so we were still taking signups prior to the meeting, right up until the start of the meeting. But the signing up in advance is working really well. So, I've continued that also.
I think that's fine. The real question is, can 300 people come at, at, at the meeting and sign up?
As the policy stands, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've never put a limit on the number of speakers.
That's what I'm saying. It, it, the policy sort of indicates that would be possible. Okay. I, I was just a question. But, but her motion, the end of your motion would.
All signups must be submitted one hour prior to the meeting start time.
That, that means we'd have to change some word. I have no problems with doing it, but we'd have to change some wording some other places.
Well, can, and I'm just talking this through. If you do that one hour before, that means Laura has to get out of here, do a dinner, get back in an hour before the meeting. So, that kind of, I mean, I'm just talking.
Two hours, three hours?
Yeah. I, I, I'm just talking that through. So, I'm thinking about her. So, that's going to limit her as to going out, grabbing something to eat or whatever and getting back here in time. So, I'm, I don't say that I don't like that idea of signing up so many hours before. So I don't say that I don't like that idea of signing up so many hours before. But I think it probably, you could say, has to be done by 3:00 or something.
I agree, because meetings are, they're advertised and they're put out. In this modern day of technology, there's hardly a person that's not aware of...
Right.
You know, pending appointments and things. So the idea that we have to run it right up to the last minute to have somebody interested in speaking because, again, the fallback is folks that can't make it, folks that don't want to speak in public, they're going to send an email. And I read every one of them, so...
So I, I would like to take the time back to say by 3:00 because, like I said, that doesn't tie Ms. Bowerm up so much.
All right, so that would make my motion to amend what is in green up here to when public comment is offered, the chair may exercise discretion to limit the public hearing time to three hours on a first sign up, first speak basis. All signups must be submitted by 3:00 the day of the meeting.
Okay, I will, just to make it easy, I would just take that, that whole thing as a replacement for my motion. So the motion we're talking about now is wording that Chelsea's giving.
And then, under Regulations Number One, where it says, "Public comment sign up for provided at each regular meeting."
We'll have to take that out.
Have to take that out.
Yes.
Okay.
We may have to look at some other policies and see if it's in the policy itself. This is a regulation, make sure that...
I'll compare it back.
Okay.
And Chelsea, do you have that written down? What you said, so that I can just have it after the... I try to keep up with you.
Do you want to write it on here?
Yeah, this is kind of scratch.
Write it on here and I'll pass that down.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's something that we can live with. I'll give Chelsea just a moment to write that down, and then I will ask her to repeat her motion.
Okay, so this would be striking Number One, under the regulations, and replacing everything in green to state, "When public comment is offered, the chair may exercise discretion to limit the public hearing time to three hours on a first sign up, first speak basis. All signups must be submitted by 3:00 PM the day of the meeting."
Okay. All in favor of this by saying aye? I'm sorry, second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of this by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And it's carried along with that the intent that the wording as far as sign up will be checked in our other policies.
I'll update that.
Okay. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is, under Board Members is B. And I will turn it to Ms. Anderson.
So just a few questions that I have on independent audit. I was, under the impression that we are currently involved in an independent audit with the Board of Supervisors. I would just like to understand what the process is. When does, when do the rest of us get involved? When's the rest of the board get involved? Will the full audit report be presented to the board without interpretation? And when will the report be released?
I may have to defer to Mr. Honnicker on that.
I'm sure he's very familiar with it.
Yes.
Yes, we are, it is in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors, but they do, they do a separate audit on the school as well. And they do, they do reports that are sent. The board reports are sent here. I'm going to say probably, I believe it's about February. Don't hold me on that if it's incorrect, but I can go find one to double check. So, yes, and in the past, those have not necessarily been presented. They've been offered to the board, but it certainly would not be a problem to present them. They're easy to reform. So, yes, I think that answers your question a bit more, but...
Am I correct to actually go down and like run through the high school books too?
That is a separate audit. That's the Activity Fund Audit, which that happens in July. And there is a separate report for the activity funds as well as the school board funds as well.
So this one that's currently going on is not going to be released till February?
Well, the, the main audit takes place, it started two, it started three weeks ago. They do a preliminary audit. And then they come back in October and do the full audit. And again, they process, and I'm sorry, I just don't have all the dates. But if I, I believe it's about February that that report is sent out.
And these are done every year, correct?
Every year, yes.
And could you tell us what the independent form is?
PB Mars is the name of the company.
And do we use them every time?
They have, we have used them for the last five years, I believe. And they do go out for bid and they... I can't tell you, again, the county handles that, so I don't know how often. But again, they switched companies right before I came here. So I've been here five years now, so we have been with this company for five years.
Is there any way that we can expect that before the start of the new school year? That we could, you know, as far as having new board members and then also having a new superintendent and giving him the opportunity to start on a completely clean slate?
No, I mean, we, we won't even, we won't even finish closing out our books till probably October. Because, again, state funds, we have, we have sales taxes two years, two months in arrears. So they won't even be coming in till, you know...
And you, and you have an ASR also to complete, correct? And the ASR isn't even due until September.
That's Annual School Report.
Yes.
And again, that's...
That goes to the state.
You close out about the time that you work on that. So that's, I'll just say that's a very, very busy time for our, the finance department.
And that's also part of it as well.
Yes, yes, that ties back, it ties back into the audit.
So, so what I'm...
The ASR is Annual School Report.
Yeah. And so what I'm trying to, to create a picture here is it is a, it's a long process with a lot of moving parts, with a lot of different entities involved. The State Department, the audit, the county, the school system. Lot of, lot of parts. And, you know, you do, you start out in the beginning with the activity funds. Activity funds are based in the schools. And then the, the bigger picture around the county expenditures and the budget is what Mr. Honnicker and I are referring to now. And so it, it's, it's a long process. And it's, and it's looking at, at, you know, $56 million right now, so...
And, and I mean, last year's audits are available if someone was interested in looking at those.
I would definitely would like to, just so I understand what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Both the activity funds and the operating funds, all of that is available.
Okay.
Certainly get those to you.
All right, I'll, I could send you an email and we could set something up, and you can go over it with me if that would be great.
Yeah, they're, they're hard, I think I could probably, most of those are hard copy. But I can certainly get those to anyone who wants them.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honnicker. All right, now, Ms. Bowerm, can we do the review of the July 18th meeting?
Yes. See, it looks like about... I believe the only thing that we will have left is the policy revisions, if I'm remembering correctly of everything we've done tonight. So I will update that agenda, so hopefully that will be a light meeting. And would you like me to move on to the calendars?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then if we look at... So July, as you might recall, we moved the first meeting to the 18th due to several board members being on vacation. And so that, and then we have the holiday also on the 4th. We've got the VSBA Conference on Education on the 19th. Ms. Page and Mr. Hopkins are attending. Our work session, we turn right around and have a work session on the 25th. And then new teachers will return on the 28th and the 29th. And then right now in August, the only exciting things we have on there are a board meeting and a work session, which actually return to the first Monday and last Monday.
All right, is that it, Ms. Bowerm?
I believe so. Oh, Ms. Dawson would like to add something. Oh, shoot. So I decided that was not going to happen in August. So, yeah, I think I'll add that.
The keeper of the calendar, yeah, powerful.
I just decided.
There you go.
Kids get till September.
All right.
Very good.
So with that, can we have the closed session motion, please?
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Orange County School Board convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A 1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
A second.
Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we're in closed session, and we'll go back here.